It's now 3:45. It's time to get going on the Ad hoc Committee on Recovery and Energy, Natural Resources, and Economic Benefit Waste for L.A., special meeting. If the clerk would like call number one, please.
Item number one, Bureau of Sanitation and Department of General Services reports relative to city recycling programs. This item has also been referred to the Energy and Environment Committee.
And for the audio record, I'm joined, Councilman Smith, I'm joined by Councilmember Cardenas today. Mr. Parks is on his way, so, thank you.
Good afternoon. Karen Higgins from the Bureau of Sanitation, reporting on city facilities recycling activities in the city. Effective July 1st, the city facilities recycling program was transferred from the General Services Department to the Bureau of Sanitation. And since then, we've rolled out blue bins in most city facilities. And so the blue bin is consistent with the curb side program, so all the materials go into one bin. And there are some leased facilities that haven't been completed yet, but for the most part, city facilities are pretty much done, including fire stations, police stations, libraries. The city facilities recycling staff have hosted several informational tables and sent out emails about the new program, and also about the Styrofoam expanded polystyrene ban. We recently sent out a survey to city departments to ask them if they were adhering to the ban, and for the most part, those that have responded have indicated that they don't purchase the polystyrene. And then also, we distributed smaller blue recycling bins for libraries, and also battery buckets, so the general public can now deposit their batteries and recyclables in the public area of the library. We've also expanded our program with custodial staff in General Services Department, so that employees are not to put recyclables in the trash, and we'll be sending that out for the civic, the rest of the civic center next week. So if an employee puts recyclables in the trash, and it's really obvious, then the custodians won't empty their trash bin, and then they'll also leave a note on the chair telling them why they didn't empty the bin. We've also placed several bins for, blue bins on the sidewalks around the civic center and the Public Works Building, and recently, we just added some permanent recycling bins at the Los Angeles Mall. In addition, CFRP also works by doing special events on the weekends, and so we've been working with the Solid Resources Support Services to cooperatively handle events on the weekends, and these are events like fairs, marathons, runs, that sort of thing. We provide free recycling with blue bins. In addition, we had an LAUSD warehouse sale, and this is where extra supplies go to salvage services, and then LAUSD schools can sign up and buy supplies for a dollar, and they could buy things like chairs, or filing cabinets, old binders, things that aren't needed by city employees. As we are transitioning from the colored bins to blue bins, we've had extra recycling bins, and those we've been loaning out to local nonprofits for use in recycling, and we've loaned out about 500 so far, so that they can increase their recycling efforts throughout the community. There was another report that we submitted in 2007, when I was at GSD, and that was just kind of going over what we're doing with the LA police departments, and all of the police department stations were trained on the program, and then recently, they were switched to the blue bins, so we did a little bit of training on the blue bins. So they all have, pretty much all of the facilities have blue bin recycling, so it makes it easier, and most of the employees have been supportive of the blue bin recycling, because it's just easier to use, and they seem to like it so far.
Couple questions. Have we done any kind of contamination testing to see how it's working? Are we getting contamination problems with employees, or they understand what they're supposed to do?
We've had a few small problems, and usually, the crew are notified by the staff, and so we found that Slim Fast really does not belong on the recycling bin, because it smells really bad. Otherwise, people have pretty much been good about emptying out their Coke bottles, et cetera, and we did have to change to some other vendors. We're now using the sanitation vendor for some of the materials, because the materials aren't as clean, but they're still accepting the material.
On the polystyrene, you said you'd gotten response from some departments. How many out of the 40 or so have responded?
As of this morning, we had, oh, Karen Coke up here, of Sanitation, we had 24 of the city departments respond so far. I also got a phone call from Wreckin' Parks, saying that they would need a little bit more time for the survey, because they're distributing it out to all their golf courses and other areas where they have concessions, to get responses from them. So we've gotten a decent response so far, and we're going to follow up with the large city departments that, you know, have a larger stake in this, to get more information on their responses.
Great. And I noticed in the report, there are some concerns about blue bins in public use areas for scavengers, like if you put them in parks and public areas, scavenger, I know across the street at the mall, that's a problem. Have you looked at any kind of locking devices, you know, they have a hole on the top, you can put stuff in, but it's kind of hard to get it out of?
Well, the permanent bins that are picked up by the truck driving down the street, those are open, and we're looking at some different ones, because people do steal the liners. The new bins in the mall, it does have a locking device, but if someone reaches in, they could still pull some of the materials out. So it just depends on if you want a nice-looking bin, sometimes the people can steal them, but as long as they don't trash the area, we're not as concerned about that, at least we know they're getting recycled.
It does get recycled, that's the end result, obviously.
The bins that we purchased for the Venice Beach pilot, the 15 metal bins, they've used various methods to try to keep the recyclables in the bin for the nonprofit that collects them. So they can be locked, and they can be secured, it just takes more time and costs a little bit more money. You need a metal bin, and something that's very sturdy, where somebody can't reach inside of it.
Last thing, how did the Christmas tree recycling go this year?
Very good question. Neil Guglielmo, Bureau of Sanitation, Civil Recycling. We collected a little over 80,000 trees this year, similar to last year. We were actually expecting, based on the downturn in the economy, and the reduction in the tonnage that we've seen across the board, that we probably would have seen less trees, but we had done additional outreach this year. We had some companion outreach done by the ACC, American Chemistry Council, as well. What we did this year is we combined our Christmas tree drop-off program with a packaging drop-off program. The holidays, we have a lot of packaging, it's cardboard, styrofoam, EPS, all kinds of materials. And it often fills up our blue bins, people want to put it in trash bins as well, or throw it in the curb, or whatever. So we thought, give an opportunity to bring their packaging, as well as their trees, with them to the drop-off locations. We collected almost two tons of packaging material, given it's a very lightweight material, that's actually a pretty good amount, yeah. Large quantity, small weight. But about 8,000 trees, over 8,000 trees, which is actually really good, I think.
And for the audio record, we're joined by Councilmember LeBange, and questions, Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, on the tree recycling, at one of my parks, they use it every year for recycling trees, and we noticed that there was a fire. And the parking lot's pretty big, and they put it up as they normally do, along the parking lot, which is adjacent to a single-family residence, and there's probably other opportunities where it wouldn't be so close to the residence, so you might want to have your field crews be a little bit more conscious of that. Again, they've dropped off trees there for years and years and years, this is the first time we've noticed the fire, but unfortunately, if it was vandalism, it's probably some people doing something really silly, thinking it's not going to harm anybody, but it seemed kind of fun at the time, or something. So unfortunately, if they did it once, they'd probably do it again. So try to make sure your field crews are aware, you know, if they have a big parking lot, try to do it in a place where it's not likely to catch something else on fire, in case somebody does something like that.
Definitely, we'll do that.
Another thing, when it comes to, how long have we been collecting Styrofoam in our blue bins?
I want to say two years.
July of 2007, I think, was when we did the advertising campaign for that.
Okay, how are we doing on that?
We are collecting materials. The materials are brought to our contracts, our partners, the material recovery facilities, where the materials will then get bulked up, and then shipped for processing. And so we've been very successful in identifying a couple of markets for the materials. Across the board, the commodity markets, because the economy has gone south, but that material, strangely enough, has actually retained more of its value than some of its companion commodities, like paper. And so I think, you know, we are collecting the material now in our blue bin, we want to continue to collect those materials, and divert, whatever comes in the waste stream now, we're always looking for opportunities to divert it.
Thank you, because it just amazes me, I was in a League of Cities, excuse me, in a meeting with a bunch of other city elected, and there were some Styrofoam cuts, and we got on the conversation of Styrofoam, and I was telling them that in our city, we accept Styrofoam now, for some time now, in our recycle bins. And another city person from another city, they both looked at me, like, "What are you talking about, Styrofoam recyclable?" And I said, "Yeah." We found a vendor, I don't know if we have more than one, but back then, we found a vendor, California-based, correct, and they said, "Bring us the Styrofoam," right? And they were so amazed and surprised, and they gave me their cards, and said, "Send me whatever you have." So, Mr. Chairman, one of the things I wanted to clarify, because my staff is going to send them some information, what we have, but how does it work when other cities or would have you want to pick the brains of our staff? Do we allow them to do that? Is that kind of just a mutual aid type thing? How do we do that?
Actually, we send Karen all over the state to spread the word, actually, so...
Well, Karen, you're probably going to have some South Bay cities want to call you, maybe even testify, because coincidentally enough, both of them said that their refuse contracts are coming up in the next 90 days, so they wanted some information really quick, to see how and if they're going to include that as part of what they would like them to collect.
If you just give me the names of the cities, we can get the information to them. We have cities contact us regularly about that, mainly because they're in a contract where their material recovery contractor does not, will not accept that material, because they say there's no market, so it happens a lot.
Exactly, and that's what they pointed out, they pointed out that they wanted to know who our vendor was that was actually taking the Styrofoam in, because exactly what you said, they said, "Well, what did we get told by the people picking up the trash? Well, we're not going to pick it up, because we have nowhere to send it." So they wanted to know both. One, how are we doing it? And then secondly, who is a vendor, or vendors that are actually taking Styrofoam, so they can tell to put it in the RFP, and say, and vendors do exist?
And we have, I mean, there's two already in California, we've been dealing with Tim Bron, which is up in the Stockton area, and then PDR's another vendor locally, and so they're in California, that also takes the materials. So we'll be happy to provide that, Karen, or myself, the staff, always happy to answer questions, their jurisdictions, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just say, you know, in my experience, the people who go through both the black can and the blue can are no threat to the community. Have you heard of anybody having a problem with that? Because people do complain about people scavenging, but in talking to police officers, they, in a variety of areas throughout the city, they felt that there was no, these are earnest people trying to get a few dollars. Have you ever heard of a crime take place out of that?
I think there's been a federal concern.
Anybody got an idea?
Alex Hello, Assistant Director, Bureau of Sanitation. Last Friday, Councilman, we, there was an arrest in the West Valley area, our drivers spotted several individuals who were on walkie-talkie, and they had, they were going down, picking up material from the blue bin, they reported to LAPD. LAPD responded, and they confiscated the truck, but the individuals were, basically were released. We met several weeks ago with, actually, over a few months ago, also with the city attorney, and this was raised by our director, Enrique Zaldivar, to Chief Bratton, about this one being on the increase, we've seen, because of the way the economy is handling, a lot of people are scavenging. Now, it seems like you see an old lady with a shopping cart, LAPD...
Or an old guy, either one, just to be, I don't want to, I don't want to send you to sensitivity training, you know?
Particularly in the large mall area, if you see an old guy walking around.
Yeah, then, but now, we're finding out, actually, in some areas, they're going over the fence into people's backyard, and taking recyclables out. It happened to a couple city attorneys, who were for the city.
So this has recently increased now?
Yeah, but we are working with LAPD in the valley, in Van Nuys area, they're very active.
Some people say, "Look, I don't like people going through my blue can, so I don't use the blue can, I just throw it on my black can." Many of the scavengers go through black cans too, which, you know, they're taking stuff out of the waste stream. The other side, some have a greater challenge, and sometimes they take the trash and throw it on the street, or they're just looking for the aluminum, or the glass bottle, or the plastic. But if you monitor that, and do the right thing, how much do you think we lose for...
Millions.
Millions, do you think?
We've done a report a long time ago, several years ago, and we had an estimation from the Bureau, close to, I mean, at that time, the markets were really high, so we, I believe we projected close to half a million dollars a year. Now, with the markets being dropped significantly, we have to go back and take a look, but we know with the way the economy is going, a lot of people are scavenging, but in that valley, we've been working very close with LAPD to, for them to seize the vehicles, as well as do, you know, throw up stuff.
And I would do public information to tell people that, "Don't put your cans out until 7:00 a.m. If you are not collecting before 7:00 a.m." I know some guys come in quickly in the morning, in high traffic streets, before the traffic, and they try to get it done, but I would just, I put my blue cans out, and then if someone goes through mine, I will say, "I save it for the city." And then my son, who's 10, gives me all kinds of guilt, why I'm not helping out the poor guy, who's going through the trash can.
You know, I think from a different, actually, back in the mid-'90s, actually, I worked on a task force, we did arrests on that, we made eight arrests back then, but we weren't looking for the individual...
Looking for the pickup truck.
We were looking for the organized, what they call the mothership, the big truck, and the guys out feeding the truck, and we actually picked up some big truckloads of stuff back then, so I think that's what the department's concerned about, it's not the individual that goes through and picks up a handful of cans in there, but really, the big operations that are really competitors, in a way.
Just on the tree recycling, I think that's important, I still see a couple trees in my district where there are apartments, and I'm going to find out, I'm going to pass them again this week, if they're still there, I'll call your folks, who are very attentive to it, but go on, move forward.
Just call the hotline, we'll pick it up.
1-800-ENRIQUE, no, no, 1-800-ENRIQUE-ZALDEVA.
All right, a couple things before we note and file this, you've answered the question on polystyrene ban, survey results, we're going to have something on that in a timely way?
Yes, what we're going to do is, we're going to resurvey in a few months, and we're going to have, you know, a lot, we'll be a lot further along. Part of this first survey was also to remind them, you know, we've posted on the Internet, and send things out, but this kind of forced them to send out more information, and really, that was the first, and then after this, we'll really get into more depth.
Okay, and on Wreckin' Parks, when are they going to give you an answer, you think?
Well, Wreckin' Parks, we have been, we have met with them a couple of times, we've had discussions with them about recycling the parks. We had a tentative agreement to start a pilot, which we thought was very modest. With the changes in their budget, they have had reservations and concerns, so it hasn't progressed further. We do believe...
What's the cost to them? I mean, you're running the programs, you're going to be in there doing the work, really.
Right, and we assured them that we would minimize any potential impacts to them in terms of service or cost, so, but I think their focus has really been on trying to solve their budget difficulties as their top priority, and they see this as important, but a lesser priority. We do feel it's a very important thing to move forward, though.
All right, well, if you need an extra kick in the rear, let me know, because I'm on the Budget Committee, and they do appear inform me over there, so we can communicate to them, saying, "Get this done, folks."
Thank you.
Just one question I got to ask on that issue right there. All of the tree work done by Wreckin' Parks is 100% recycled, correct?
Correct.
All in the recycling center in Griffith Park at the base of Toyon, that's...
It's a great facility, yes, they do recycle organic waste.
Yeah.
This is for the non-organic green waste.
Right, and also, being that I'm in the parks often, the recycling out of bins are done by people, and they get a lot of stuff that cuts out the waste stream, so I don't know, even if we had a, even if we had one, then they'd beat us to the punch, so, okay.
Okay, diversion rate, 75% by 2013, are you getting information from the departments on how they're going to achieve that?
Well, we have an annual report that we compile for the state every year, so we're going around with the city departments. As part of this, since it wasn't a motion, it was a directive to the Bureau of Sanitation, it didn't require other city departments to actually come up with a plan to achieve that 75%. But we have to look at it holistically, you know, who collects what in the city? So the city departments are going to be a huge part of the solution. I think that moving forward with the blue bin recycling, the construction and demolition recycling requirements, if we can get that citywide, things like that, that's going to move us a lot closer to the goal.
But there's some departments, like Wreckin' Parks, airports, which have huge volumes, and we need to have, they need to have a plan in mind, to get, I mean, I've finally seen LAX bins in all the terminals for the first time, and you go to some cities, like Chicago, they're on every 10 feet or so, you know, and at LA, you're lucky to see them in our airport until recently, so there's some very big departments that have a lot of volume, that we've got to make sure they focus on the goal, that 2013 is their goal for 75%.
Well, we can certainly be directed to report back with the information from, you know, the large city departments.
Okay, let's do that, pick out those larger departments that have large volumes, and ask them to report back to us on their plans. And then finally, on 939 reports, you've got to get that from the departments, right, before September?
Yes, we're working with them now, we just, the state was a little behind, you know, they passed the bill last year that changed the whole reporting system, so we're working with them, we got the 2007, and now we'll move into the 2008 numbers, only a few months behind, which is light speed for the state. So we'll actually have a lot of information about what the city departments are doing right now, and what they did up till the end of 2008, in about September of this year.
Good, all right. With that, we'll note and file that with the notations made, and move on to item number two.
Item number two, Bureau of Sanitation report relative to city recycling program and adoption of zero waste goals defined by the California Integrated Waste Management Board. This item has also been referred to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Good afternoon. Reina Pereira with the Bureau of Sanitation. I'd like to provide you a status update on the solid waste integrated resource plan, and for you, Councilwoman LeBange, also known as the Zero Waste Plan. I know you hate city acronyms, so the Zero Waste Plan really began in April...
Zero Waste is trashed energy.
No, it's the overarching...
What's the right word instead of saying trashed energy?
That's alternative technology, is a trash energy...
Inversion technology, okay, I wanted to get it right.
Right, but, so, the Zero Waste Plan started in April 2007, and was an intense stakeholder-driven process, to really garner stakeholder input on how the city was going to achieve zero waste, as well as ensuring that we incorporated the goals that were identified in the Renew LA Plan, as well as the various mayoral goals that have been established. During the first phase, we conducted over 250 public outreach meetings, which included key constituent one-on-one meetings, grassroots meetings, like 75 business interviews, as well as 42 regional workshops, where the outreach team went out to the six different waste sheds throughout the city to meet with stakeholders, and garner comments, feedback, and input on this Zero Waste Plan. To date, we have over 2,000 stakeholders in our Zero Waste database, and they have been instrumental in providing us, and guiding the way to identifying the SWOP stakeholder 12 guiding principles, which I'd like to mention here, and as you will hear, quite a lot of them kind of encompass some of the Renew LA goals. The first one was protecting public health and the environment, ensuring city leadership as a model for zero waste policies, looking at manufacturer responsibility, providing incentives, looking to city leadership to increase recycling, making it convenient to encourage recycling, incorporating economic efficiency, education and outreach to decrease wasteful consumption, providing new safe technology, providing equity, providing education and outreach to increase recycling, and requiring consumer responsibility. So those were identified in May 2008, and really were the focus of Phase Two, which started in July of last year, and looked at focusing at the facility plan, and really the details of what programs, policies, and facilities the city needs to identify to reach this goal of zero waste by 2030. The Phase Two facilities plan will be looking at generation and disposal and projections through the 20 years. It'll identify, in fact, through the stakeholder process, 70 policies and programs were identified, as well as the SWOP team identified 20 facility options that could be included in this plan. We're going to be looking at disposal capacity and needs assessment to address what existing facilities we have in place right now, and where the gaps are, and what additional recycling and resource recovery facilities we're going to need in the future to meet that goal of zero waste. And the key focus is developing a facility plan model that will look at all these different scenarios of tweaking various policies, and various policies, programs, and infrastructure, when they will be implemented through this 20-year phase, and what expected diversion we can encounter with these programs being in place, and then also identifying the facility needs to ensure that we can plan accordingly, and make sure we have the infrastructure. For example, food scrap recycling, we know that if we roll that out citywide, the goal is to have local management of the resources, and so we would definitely need additional composting facilities, alternative technology facilities is a key to meeting that goal as well. And so we're looking to, we're actually looking to finalize the facility plan model in the next couple of weeks, and our next round of stakeholder workshops is scheduled for late March, and we're going to be presenting the various scenario options to the stakeholders, and getting their input, and basically finalizing the facility plan, hopefully by summer of this year.
Okay, is Carmen saying anything more?
I guess I'm just the pretty face here.
Ooh.
I'm at support.
Okay, just quickly, one thing I noticed is, you've got the timeframe of 2030, but the city council approved the year 2025 as the completion date, so there's an inconsistency between your working plans for SWOP and what the council already approved.
That's right, and we recognize that this was a solid waste master plan, which typically is a 20-year planning effort, and the actual planning process will be complete in 2013, which really kind of puts the plan as being complete in 2033, but understanding that the Renew LA goal is 2025 for 90%, we're basically saying that between 2025 and 2030, we'll hopefully be fine-tuning that goal, and hopefully exceeding it, because the definition as, I think we describe it, is 90% or done, closed, and some of the model scenarios that we've been going through show that we could, you know, with mandatory recycling, or certain options of programs and facilities, we could actually exceed that goal.
Okay, well, maybe then the goal should be between 2025 and 2030 as the goal, and be a little more nebulous in it, rather than specific, which says we could get it earlier, like we planned to, but at the latest date, 2030, then.
Okay.
I think, because the council already approved that other date, so...
Right, absolutely.
Be consistent. And then, let me ask that other question offline. For the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Parks. Senator Parks, do you have any questions on item number two?
No.
Okay, Senator LeBange? Okay, we'll go ahead, and then we will move the E and R Committee report on this, and ask Bureau of Sanitation report back as soon as information is gathered on the facilities plan, if you want to us. With that, no objections, that'll be noted and filed.
Thank you.
And then, since Mr. Parks, you've joined us, and Mrs. LeBange is here, we noted file number two, or it's number one as well, echo essence of that, and item number three, and we have the city attorneys here, there's a matter dealing with a lawsuit issue, I think it would be advisable for the... I think it would be advisable for the, my colleagues to be advised about the case the suit is, before we go back in a public session. So if you'd like to adjourn in the anteroom for a brief legal description of the lawsuit in executive session, and then we can come back. So you want to read in the record the-
Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney. The committee will be adjourning in the closed session to discuss the cases entitled Browning Ferris Industries versus City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Case Number BS 118796, and County of Los Angeles versus City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court, Case Number BS 118788, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Subey in Paris.
So we'll adjourn momentarily, and be back with you, hopefully. We're on?
We're on.
Okay, the committee is back in session, report the matter. The lawsuit matter will be heard back in this committee in two weeks, with a continuation report back. And with that, we conclude with the items of the agenda day. Anyone who wishes to speak to the committee on an on-adjourned item, may come forward now. Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.